Select Board's meeting, January 30th, 2018. In attendance, Mr. Mowgli, Mr. Didi, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for January 30th. We'll open the meeting with public comments. Anyone has any comments they'd like to make to the Select Board? Now is your chance. If you could just state your name for the record.
Charles Dunlap, Emergency Management Director, Thomas Southwick. I'd like to share some good news with you. Last June 24th and 25th, we held our annual emergency communications exercise. And the results have come out. And this past year, we scored 10th between the United States and Canada. And that was better than the year 2016, which we were rated 16th. And we came first in New England. And I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the residents of the town of Southwick for their support for our training exercise, which is held every year. Thank you.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you, Charlie.
That's excellent to you and your whole crew. Anyone else?
Sure. I don't know whether I should speak now or wait until the 250th, but I'm Lee Hamburg, 48th South Long Island. And I just wanted to suggest to the Selectmen that sometime between now and say, the annual meeting, that you consider putting together a committee for the 250th anniversary, because I know that it's going to take a lot of time to plan and put things together or coordinate things. And if you don't do it, time is going to tick right past you.
Already working on the notice to do it. Check your mail. Check your mail. We're already, we're preaching to the choir. In the same church, different pew. He's in charge.
I would just like to mention, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Hamburg is also a member of the greatest class that ever graduated from Southland High School.
There's a lot of them.
Class of 1975, so.
1946?
Yeah. So that we, great minds think alike.
As they say.
Oh, and Chief Anderson also, Mr. Chairman.
I respectfully disagree.
And as Ronald Reagan said, contrary to public opinion, they were not at the founding of this town of Southwick. Excellent idea. Glad you thought of it.
It comes with a lot of responsibility.
That's right, Vice Chairman. Anyone else for, under public comment? Going once, going twice? Is your candidate here?
Yep.
We'll proceed to our 6:05 career firefighter EMT candidate. Hi, Doug Mowgli. Okay. We have a few questions for you.
Okay.
We're going to start from my right and go this way. And at the end of our little question session, you'll have an opportunity to ask any questions you have of us, or make any statements, or whatever you'd like to do.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yes.
You'd like to be called Zach?
Yes.
Okay. Zach, as you were aware, this is a small department that will be growing over the years to come. Where do you see yourself in the next three to seven years?
So, next three to seven years, I'd like to see myself actually living in this town. Currently live in Westfield. And I've seen how you're trying to expand to a paramedic level, and I think that's great. It's better for the community, so any way to help that movement is what I'd like to see. I'd like to see myself staying in this area as well and being a part of this department.
So why do you want to work in Southwick as a firefighter EMT?
Why do I want to work in Southwick? Like I said, I see it growing as a community. The fire department's growing. I also like the area. Nice rural area. You've got the lakes and everything, so it just seems like it's expanding and be a good area to live in.
Quick follow-up. You live in Westfield now, right, Zach? Lifetime Westfield resident?
I grew up in Southampton, between Southampton and Westfield.
Okay, so you're.
From this area, yes.
Okay.
Other side of the tracks.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
That's Didi.
Joe, just telling you.
All you, sir.
All right. So if you just listened to our last minutes for our meetings in the last year, you would have these questions, because I think we've already asked them 20 times. So, what is your greatest failure? And what did you learn from that experience?
My greatest failure would probably be just getting out of my shell and, you know, not afraid to ask questions, but I get shy every now and then, so that'd be my biggest thing. But, you know, I've taken college courses, public speaking and whatnot, which have helped me, you know, grow through. And also the paramedic course, you really don't have a choice, so that helped a lot.
Get you out of your shell.
I did break out of it.
Yeah, it's tough. Right, thank you.
Quick follow-up. So, I think, I think that that, that's excellent. And I think that that's a, more of a weakness than a failure. But can you think of a situation where things didn't go the way you had it figured out? And what was the lesson that you learned from that?
I guess, biggest failure would be, say, working with someone who didn't really, not get along with, but kind of didn't have the same ideas. But after all, through talking through it, you know, got through the problem and figured it out.
You don't like that last question, do you?
Well, it's just like, greatest failure, where do you start with that? Because you beat on your brother when he was small.
I could talk for three hours on that.
Could it be because you?
That's what I realized. I could talk for three hours on that.
Three, I got a couple of days invested. So it's just a weird question, like, do you take it personally, or do you take it on the business side? And, ah, the guy was a jerk, but I learned to live with him, or, you know, it was more of a personal question. It's, it's all over the map, and we've gotten answers all over the map.
That's why it's a good question.
Yeah. Fell off the monkey bars once.
There you go.
See, a little late now.
You don't do that no more. Yeah, right, yeah. Don't sell past the globe.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for us?
No questions at the time. Well, do you guys know if you're planning on hiring more within the close future as to paramedics?
Depends on the budget, but the general plan is yes. We've, as a town, and the chief can speak way more eloquently than I, but we've committed this board and the fire department to go to ALS. And it's a step-in process, right? We have one firefighter paramedic today, correct? We're looking at a second. At some point, there's going to be more as we expand the hours of our operation for ALS and start weaning ourselves off of the mutual aid scenario that we work under today. And eventually, you know, it's going to be, you know, a much wider period of coverage in town that will have ALS. So by definition, yes.
Sounds good. Absolutely.
And you could probably add that we also have the support of the finance committee, and we have the support of the voters at the town meeting that have, we've discussed this, and they voted the money so far.
What year did you graduate, Russ?
That's 1975, the greatest class.
So, what's happening is the class of 1975 is getting older. They're going to need more of the paramedic level than the junior level. So yes, we're headed in that direction. Absolutely. Class of 84, so there's a few years to go, so.
Eighty-four?
Eighty-four. So we'll let the elders first.
And I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity, and I hope to work here in the town of Southwick and maybe make a life here and move here and have a family, so.
Absolutely. Excellent. Do we have anything else for this applicant to see?
No, I think Zach did a good job.
I think the chief, you gave him a copy of the bargaining unit document?
Yeah, that was mailed.
Handbook and all those, so he's got all those documents, that's good. He availed himself to them.
Any questions about that?
Not at the moment. I read through them, so it's pretty clear.
Chief's a good guy.
Chief's, yes.
At first, for the most part.
It's right in the handbook.
Yeah, it's in the chief's too.
I got it.
Well, Zach, Zach, having had experience in two other communities, his chief spoke highly of them in those other two communities. That's good.
From Southampton?
Southampton and Westfield.
Westfield.
Fantastic.
Okay.
What's the next step of this process, sir?
Well, you would make a vote to make an offer of appointment contingent upon the requirements that the chief will put in place.
All right. How do we say your last name?
Coretta.
Coretta. All right, so I'll make a motion for Zachary Coretta to.
Like what he said.
Like what he said.
Second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Coretta, provided you pass everything else, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
Pass your paper down. Oh, I saw it. Look, it's you. Okay. The chief took off right in time for his fiscal year 18 budget overview.
We can do the last.
Okay, so we're going to acknowledge payables warrant 1819B dated January 29th, the amount of $482,365.26. We can look at the minutes from January 23rd.
I looked at it. I'll make a motion for January 23rd. You just assume?
I'm good, I read them.
All right.
Motion's made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Acknowledgement of the receipt of the Hampshire Trust fiscal year 19 insurance rate. Just any action required here?
No, we're adopted by, we are a member of a trust, so the trust executive committee adopts them and notifies the member units, which is what we are, so they don't want to affect your life first. Treasure Collective will be in it shortly, but for other issues, so you can certainly address any questions you have on those with her. But that's just to make you aware of them.
They've ordered everything down.
Yeah, you weren't here.
Okay.
Un screw the light bulbs.
Okay, so now we're on to the 6:15 appointment. Perfect. With the Fire Chief Anderson for his budget overview.
Are we doing this first or this first?
Let's do the budget first.
Okay.
The detailed budget, not the apparatus replacement. Does that make sense?
It's okay.
Would you rather do the other first?
No, 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 no. I just, you know, had a presentation, but, you know, you want to ruin the presentation.
Go ahead, do that first.
We tried to get in there.
Ah, there you go.
Now do whatever you want.
You couldn't find a ladder truck?
Yeah.
We looked everywhere, too.
So I guess with that said, we'll go back to the fire budget.
Okay.
I didn't see them. Do we have a copy of that in our packet?
Should.
Is that the only one I get?
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
You're in charge. You got it.
That's good. We'll share.
I've, this is the same thing we looked at, right? It's a budget number?
Yeah, it was, I mean, they're all sent over a long time ago.
A long time, yeah, look in my drawer, I think it's in there.
Look in the drawer.
The counter.
No, it wouldn't be in the counter, it's in the drawer.
The drawer of the 1975 drawer?
Yeah.
Actually, I think that's an English.
They're organized, right? This is the lowest drawer, because he's the oldest. He's closest to the ground.
Isn't this supposed to be where the clerk is?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, thanks for reading it, Russ.
Oh, he didn't say read it, he said he had it.
I just found it in the drawer. Okay. Here, we'll share this.
Yeah, we're good.
We'll share this.
It's a preview anyways, so.
That's right.
Go right ahead.
So, with that said, I'll start with the fire budget. And under, the first line item is a new line item that was added was for the addition of a part-time inspector. Currently, we have a person that has worked out fine for taking care of those smoke detectors and liquor licenses and things like that. But the issue becomes the inspector's position is much more vibrant than that in a lot of the things that we do. Whether it's their interactions with art, with the building inspectors, new building plans with the planning board, it becomes pretty involved. And some of the things are, we're not doing what we should be doing by statute, whether it be inspecting certain facilities. We're starting to do that more and more, so his time becomes, you know, more increasing. But a lot of it takes background to review the codes, see how the codes interface with building code. And there's some time, a lot of time involved, not simply just going up and hitting the button on a smoke detector and making sure it works. So, what I was proposing was a part-time inspector at roughly 18, 1890 an hour for 20 hours or so. This is kind of a breakdown of, we currently do, in the past year, we've done 329, 329 permits. At $35 apiece, the current, the way we currently do it is $25 goes to the inspector for doing the permit. So we're roughly taking in $11,000 in fees potentially. This is average, because some of them, like an oil tank comes out, might be $100, a smoke detector might be 35, liquor license, something else. So there's a couple of ways to get there. But typically, if you look at these, these are the listings of permits we should be following. Every time something, a new industry comes to town, a new business, these are all the things we should be involved with that we're not. If you look at the second page, you'll see Hadley, the town of Hadley, and they have a very deep inspection process. And while their numbers aren't high, they have tons of business. And as we go down the road to, all right, we get more and more business, industrial parks start to grow, these types of things will become more and more evident in our needs. So, there's a couple of different ways of doing this. There would be, A, assigning the money to fill a part-time position, roughly $20,000. There would be, B, try to offset some of that with fees. Or there could be ways to reclassify certain job descriptions within a department that could help offset some of these costs. But my goal would be to do this at the least impact as possible. Want me to come back to this?
How much training's involved?
So, you need, there's two. There's a C, a basic class, and then there's like a 40-hour class that needs to, certification that needs to, so that I can delegate the authority to do that.
Right.
And then there's a secondary class that's just coming out now, what they call a PO2, which just takes it a little further. Some of them gets into inspections, where others start to get into more plan reviews, sprinkler systems, things like that. So, that's a cursory view of that.
Hadley actually has supervised cannon and mortar firing.
Kind of have that.
You never know. You wonder if they're going to be breached.
And a tar kettle.
Well, they got the river to protect.
They're on the UMass border.
Yeah. They're actually a very interesting town, is that half of the mullin center is in their town. Or most of the mullins.
Maybe that's where they.
That's another whole story. Volunteer salaries goes from $75,000 to $85,000. We've seen a 20% increase in fire calls, but we've, I'm basically increasing that 13% to try to split the difference in that fee. That'd be for the volunteer, the call force. As we go down, under the, probably everything else is, for the most part, level funded, with the exception of inspections and repair, is, well, it is level funded from today, but depends if, I guess, if we're talking about the 5% decrease or the 5% increase. But in my case, you'll see level funded and 5% increase is the same. I'm not going for an increase on the basic budget, I'm just trying to develop an operational The, so the next one that's in yellow is the contracts and agreements. And that went from $21,000 down to $14,000. The reason for that is, under contracts and agreements, we've been carrying things that are related to EMS operations. So I pulled those items from there. For instance, our software that runs our ambulance billing and the computers of that, things like that. So anything that's ambulance-related, I've reduced to the fire budget, and I've added a line item that we'll see in the ambulance budget. So now we're at least, the cost centers are aligned properly. Our Verizon, our dues, pretty much everything is level funded through those areas. Under food expenses, we went from 500 to 1,000. And the reason for that was accounting has asked us to take anything, that used to be reserved for an event, whether we had a fire, storm details, some stuff like that, we would utilize that. But any coffee, any, anything else that we eat, our water that's in the station, she wants that to come out of food, not out of supplies where it used to come out of. So that's why that increased from 500 to 1,000. Clothing allotment, level funded. The conference and travel, level funded. The hose inspection went from 33 to 43. That's the cost of our hose inspection, but the difference is we now have, we bring in a company that used to just do hose for the 33-ish, but now they do hoses, ladders, nozzles, and pumps on all the trucks for that price, so. And give us a certified report, which is part of the requirements now. The minor equipment increases from $11,000 to $16,000, but the flip side of that is minor equipment went from $9,000 to $7,000. And again, this was a request from the accounting, that things that we used to, we've been, as we've been going through the year with Laura on board, there's been things that we were taking out of supplies that she would rather see taken out of minor equipment. So, we basically flip-flopped, increased one, decreased the other, to kind of absorb more things in minor equipment, less things in supplies. Oxygen extinguishers, again, level funded. The investigations, level funded. Turnout gear, oh, association maintenance, we've been carrying $100 for that, but there's no reason to, so eliminated that. The turnout gear, we, from $13,000 under the level fund to $21,300. And basically what that is, is in the past, turnout gear was carried under a capital item. And it would be in, it would be out, it would be in, it would be out, and probably in larger chunks. From going back through the history, you'd see 20,000, then a nothing, then 10 or 20,000 again, and nothing. So, what I'm trying to do is include it in the operational line item for three, a set of gears, like $2,600 now. So, I'd like to get two to three sets always being replaced. Under the, the other thing that we're doing is we're renting gear when folks go to the academy. And, because what happens is they go to the academy, they rip it, they wear it out, and it's sometimes brand-new, depending on who it is and when they get on. So, now I can take and rent a set of gear for about $400, $500. They get them through the academy, it covers the code for what it has to be, because it has to be under 10 years old, and put the wear and tear on their gear. And then when I invest in something, it's going to last them a lot longer. So, I'm looking for that to increase, to help, helping that process, to be able to buy three or four a year. Community outreach, again, 2,000 level funding for that. The career clothing represents the staff we have, that's a contracted line item. And then the last item on there is computer software, computers and computer software for $2,000. We've typically carried that under capital in the past, and I'd just like to, again, roll that into the operational, because we're always buying some sort of computer or software every year. So, with that said, kicks us into capital budget. And the capital budget, you'll see $14,000 for facility security upgrades. Basically, this is kind of a lump sum of the building being 17 years old. And we've seen chairs that are worn out, tables that are worn out, our security system, some of the cameras are, you not have it?
This isn't really following along with what you're telling us. So I'm just. Okay.
That's probably why.
Okay.
I don't know why you didn't get them, I guess, is the question, but.
I, I went over that document with you, so I have it. I've seen it.
I mean, I'll forward them again. So, so anyways, $14,000 for a list of things, our mattresses are 17 years old in the bunk rooms, things like that. There's like a lot of little things that kind of add up.
Because you're having people sleep over more, a lot more.
Every night.
Yeah. With all your restructuring and on-call.
Yeah. Yep. Hose, basically $7,000 for the large, our feeder hose, or large diameter hose, that's one truck's worth. So last year, when we had our inspections, we lost a lot because of its date. It was kind of, kind of like a tire thing, it was a mandatory, like 1998 on that one or something. So, this is to replace one truck, which helps free up hose for other trucks. And then the, last but not least, on the fire is the apparatus replacement plan, which we know, we're talking about the ladder truck, we know we're, right around the corner from the ladder truck is Engine 2. And what we've designed in that presentation that is for you is actually to go for the ladder truck, and if not at the same time in the very near future, to replace Engine 2 and combine and decommission the rescue truck. So we reduce our fleet by one, and the replacement for Engine 2 would be a smaller unit that would be more user-friendly to more people, more maneuverable, and a lot, cost points that are a lot more affordable than a typical apparatus of today. Just, I mean, to review on the ladder truck, the necessity of it, that can be a presentation all in itself, which I'm sure it will be at some point, whether it was.
Yeah, the cap on the, right? In the joint hearing, so there'll be a better opportunity to see if they'll do that indeed, huh? But we've been talking about these apparatus issues for the last six months, between the study having been done and the issues with the ladder truck. So the net result is you'd be acquiring two replacement pieces, but taking three of these offline.
Repeat, well, yeah, well, replacing two, one offline completely. So if you, if.
With the Engine 2 replacement eventuality, this talks about putting Engine 2 in reserve. Would you actually retire that vehicle?
Yeah. Yeah, and in that presentation, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but if you start looking at replacement of vehicles in the schedule that the consultant gave us, then when you start putting 3% to 4% on an apparatus per year and carry that out 10 years, then you basically, this plan saves $700,000 over the course of 10 years. So, while it's, it's a tough bump right now, in the long run, I think it pays off. Because obviously, nothing goes down in price. And then I had one manufacturer tell me the other day that they're, they're carrying 7% increase per year, which is absurd.
Wow.
But it, it affects a lot of different things, obviously, it affects how we operate, it affects our insurance ratings, it affects, um, our ability to do certain things, flow the amount of water we can flow, and, uh, all those things, which is a presentation by itself.
Is Engine 2 more of an off-the-shelf kind of truck too, versus how you have to custom order the ladder truck?
The replacement or the existing?
Yeah, the replacement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because it'd be a commercial chassis, so it would be, you're just building the box the way you want it, whereas the other stuff, you build the cab, you know, and all the way through. Yeah, we originally started on a, looking at like something like a Ford 550 type of chassis, like a utility type of vehicle, that would get out the door, do a lot of things, but then when talking to the consultant, um, there's some reasons they go to the Ford door 550s, is to pump the drive shaft angle. But what happens is you increase your wheelbase, which actually gives you less maneuverability than going to the next size up chassis. And then typically, everybody over, puts them overweight, which creates another problem. Whereas if you go from a 19,000 GPW up to like 26,000 for the, the next size chassis. And then the other point is, you're still driving a pickup truck that's worth 10 years, 10 years worth of life, not a 30-year-old or 20-year-old fire truck, so.
Correct.
So we've leaned towards the mid-size in the, in the committee discussions. Questions on that? And then again, I know that's a presentation...
No, you took the wind out of our sails, pretty good.
That's good. Aside from the capital, the, um, basically the fire budget represents 137,000, uh, 447 operational with that 98 of the turnout gear and the computers rolled in, it used to be in capital. And that comes out as a 5% increase over last year. If we took that out, it's like a 1.7% increase over last year, minus salaries, um, which weren't asked to be in this. Any questions on that, or? Um, from an EMS budget? And I apologize, I wish you, I almost printed more too, but I said, oh, they already got them, so. Um, on the EMS budget, the only, the, the increase from 95,000 to roughly 150,000 for volunteer salaries. What that is doing is taking our model that we have today, which is roughly annually about 115,000, soup to nuts under the new plan that we voted in. What I'm carrying is some extra money in there for anticipation to go in the medic, and it being, having per diem medics for the nighttime that we would then have to pay more money for.
Right.
So it's kind of a, a dartboard at this point, but that's a rough math of a 25% increase for typically, and usually it's 18 to whatever percent on top for a medic type of, um, payroll. Um, so under contracts and agreements, uh, is the, so again, level funded for radio maintenance, the, um, contracts and agreements, there's a line item of 12,000 for, um, what we took out of fire, and then the addition of a couple other little things. So that, um, when we get to the end, it'll, it'll level out. Uh, inspections and repairs, level funded, or excuse me, reduced from 9,000 to 8,000, assuming that with the new ambulance, it would help us not have more repairs. Um, level funded for recertification, a reduction in education and training of 5,000, $500 as we start to wean away from, um, the assists we've been getting from our educational folks in this ALS transition, the in-house staff will start to be taking up more and more of it, and we can walk away from some of them and train some of it ourselves, so. That, like I'd said, that's probably a three-year transaction that'll get back down to where it was pre-ALS, which I think was 20,000 or something like that. Um, medical requirements, uh, $2,000, that's level funded. The ambulance billing is level funded at 18,000. That's strictly a percentage of whatever we bill, so.
3.9% of what's collected.
Correct. So, and I think last year we had a little reserve in that, so I did not, um, did not adjust that at all.
So the param, so we go close to the paramedic side, that gets billed out, that goes back into the EMT fund?
Enterprise fund.
The EMS, okay. The special revenue fund.
Right, so that, we'll see that slowly increase as time goes on, once we get towards that level.
Yes.
But that line item will have to go more, because if, once his billings are higher, his collections higher, then that, his operational expense will be higher.
So right, right now, the ALS is driven by the EMD from the, from the dispatch, so we're probably seeing 60 to 70% of, um, of those calls.
Yeah.
So, um, if they're jumping in our ambulance, we're billing, we're still billing at the ALS level, so we're still getting that, and we can look at rates, which, you know, is a whole different topic for another day. Um, but we're paying out $250 for every call.
Correct.
So that's where we'll see the biggest increase, is the lack of paying, paying out.
Yeah.
And we'll probably see a little, it will, our ALS calls will go up based on, all right, I got a basic level call, and now I get there, and now it's an ALS level call, so now it trips it up, which we wouldn't have called otherwise. That'll, that'll happen, you know, I can start an IV, I can do something that I wouldn't have called somebody to do. Excuse me. So yes, we will see some increase, but the biggest part will be decreasing outside costs.
Yeah.
Um, minor equipment, level funded, 8,500, supplies, uh, level funded at 10,000. Oxygen, again, level funded. Insurance premium, I added 5% to it, who knows?
Well, yeah, what happens is, as you add career people on, that has to be adjusted.
And they never time their adjustments with our budgets. No.
Because they're due to give you something, aren't they?
Yeah. Because I think that we were scrambling last year at this time or a little later, and it was like pulling teeth. Uh, medical supplies, uh, level funded at 18,000, uh, and personal protective gear, uh, again, level funded. So the, long and short of it is, between both the, um, the FY '18 fire and EMS budget was at 266, 775, the FY '19 budget comes in at 281, 295, or a 5% increase, including those capital items that were in the fire aside. And again, if we, if we don't, the combined budgets are 271 and change, or a 1.75 increase over last year. And again, this doesn't relate to contractual with salaries that wasn't asked for. Questions? And there is no capital for EMS?
The captain, I noticed you've, you've reposted the captain position.
We've reposted the captain's position, uh, both in a New England Fire Trade Magazine newspaper, uh, their website, we did a selection, or we did a, I think it's the Worcester Telegram or whatever, the Worcester area for the Sturbridge, Worcester, all that Auburn area, um, that was two Sundays ago. And I've, I've yet to see a response from that, per se. So that's been a, um, disappointment in that we're not seeing more response from that, that position.
Yeah, so we may end up having to restructure part of that fire department budget to save some money in some places and add more money to the administrative captain and EMS coordinator in other places.
I mean, kind of what I'm hearing back, a couple different reasons, but somebody that's established in a, an existing department, that's been there, like, I think we were looking for five years or so with some supervisory, is pretty well established, and they're looking at working their way up the ranks within, where they are. And with their medical callback, and they're making pretty decent money, so getting someone to want to leave, that could be, you, you need that person that needs to move back this way, or, you know, something like that. And so far, you know, we've had one or two that I'd be interested in interviewing, but more that I wouldn't than, than we would. I, I think we should have a decent pool of candidates to, the right, have the right options. Any questions?
On the, sorry, on the inspection piece that you mentioned earlier?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, net, we'll end up bringing some additional permitting money into the town for inspections we're not doing today, or that we, we could be, should be doing today.
Correct. So that revenue could grow, kind of hard to pinpoint to what, um, because you're, you're in some chartered, uncharted territories for the most part. And there, now, some of that could help out, because the building inspector's gone to an online system, and there might be things within that that I haven't looked at it real hard yet, but there might be things in there that flag for fire approval that's not in there right now. We just get a set of plans and, hey, take a look, you know, but we, we need to develop our own checklist and, and, you know, going over like what they have to, as a plan review means something, not, yeah, looks good, you know?
I'll give you my quick two cents. When I built my place, bought the plans in, I'm not going to say who, a great bunch of guys, that you just said, yeah, looks okay. So then the alarm system people came in to do everything.
You got a permit?
No, permit was fine, but like $4,000 later, because, because the good guys might have missed this, that, this, because like you said, everyone's great intentions.
Right.
But unless you have someone that really does it all the time.
It's a tough job.
It gets missed.
It's a tough job.
Yeah.
And it's always changing, the codes are changing. Well, there's been a lot back and forth between, all right, now that's under the building inspector, that's under the fire, then they do this, and the...
I think that's how it got caught, the building inspector caught it, instead of like, this isn't right.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say, Art's been a great asset and great to work with. He had a building full of people today at our place for something about knee bracing or something, but, um, we love working together and, you know, to benefit each other.
There's definitely a need.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, it's a good review so far.
Yeah, I apologize, I'll, I'll get you copies of those, but, although it's kind of a neat idea to not give you a budget.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, it's wonderful, yeah, yeah.
That won't work with finance.
We just all look dazed and confused, the radio's going, I turn on all kinds of stuff, this is, go chill, what are you doing? It's all good.
All right.
This is really about big-ticket items, so as we move forward, we know...
Yeah, I mean, the operational budgets are pretty much, you know, last year, obviously, we did, we added two positions, so that was a big, a big hit.
But this is also, you know, this, this thing is also an operational organizational type scenario, so it's good to get in front of that early and start laying out how you want to run the department next year.
And as far as the apparatus, whether, you know, how we, if we do it in quick piecemeals or lump sums, and that's obviously the powers to be in financing and bonding and all the other parts that come involved in it, but it is, and I know you guys, I'm preaching to the choir, is delays only cost a lot of money when you're talking the expense of some of these things, so, um, I think I can justify the need, well, it's just how do we get there from here?
When do you submit that other grant organization to, remember FEMA, where you're trying to get an offset on the ladder?
Yeah, it's already in.
Oh, you've already submitted it?
Yeah. That closes, uh, February 2nd, and then they start their, their process.
Okay, so that'll be good to see where, how that intervenes.
And the only other thing that was in the papers that you didn't have, was the, uh, the air compressor. I listed it as on the five-year plan, but I'm not putting it in for this year, because I went for it for the grant. So I can't fund it.
You can't, right. Is that the same with the ladder truck?
Can... So on a, on the ladder truck, um, which we will call apparatus replacement.
Apparatus replacement.
Um, we're going for a partial.
Right.
So we still have to go to town meeting to get our part.
Right.
So those numbers may change if we don't get them up, if the grant, or they might change if we do get the grant.
So it doesn't hurt having the grant and still moving forward?
Usually, usually the article is like up to.
Yeah.
So you can, it gives the town flexibility to go under.
And authorizes you to offset the price of it with the receipt of it.
Which I, you know, and in my grant, I did, um, express that, obviously, we're, we're putting money towards it, and, um, so we still have to go forward with that, their timing couldn't be worse, it's May season, you know, as far as getting results, but...
Yeah, timing is early this year, too, May 15th.
Yeah, so the government, you're never quite sure how that grant process, the opening of it got delayed because of the hurricanes, because it's under FEMA, so anything like that can delay, shut down a government can delay, so.
What's the time schedule on the air compressor?
Well, we're using the one we have that's 30 years old.
Yeah.
We've had it rebuilt a couple times.
But the grant you put in for, what's that?
Same grant, same time here.
Oh, that same grant, okay.
Same, so we should know by July, for sure.
July.
So if not, we'll, we keep using ours till it blows up or dies and addresses that then.
What's approximate cost?
60,000.
60.
Yeah. So, I, I think we, you know, it's 30 years old, so I think we'll, it'll be a high priority for us. You never know, it's a competitive grant, but I think we'll score well on that. I hope.
Well, we got the first half.
Right.
It only makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and the other good news was on the...
On the motor.
On the motor, so that's, that's good news.
Proceeding as, as is with it and...
Yeah.
We'll see what happens.
It doesn't get us out of the woods, but it hopefully buys us a little time and saves us a little money to...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that was huge news, so.
It's not, it's not useless money, you know?
Right, I mean, yeah.
It was not, not looking good to spend that kind of money to be status quo.
Right, but we were staring down a barrel hard at that, I know it. So appreciate you working with us on that and getting that in a better spot, so.
No, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Excellent, thank you very much, Steve.
Make sure you take your ambulance with you.
Yeah.
I think I have one, I have one.
Yeah, we got one for you last year.
Does that squeak, if, when you press on it, does it squeak?
No, not yet.
That's just the stress in it. Where's Randy's gifts from last week?
Oh, it's in my truck, I'll get it for you, I have it. I meant to swing it by. I had it last week too, I had it.
No, no.
No, no, no.
No.
We couldn't, all the ones at the trade show had all the axles, so we didn't get those one.
Yeah, it wouldn't match.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Shit.
Oh, man.
Jess has got her first interview person?
Oh, yeah.
Here's TCC.
Yeah, hi, how are you?
No, no, that's your, that's your section, no. Yeah, it is. Hi, Mary.
Hi. How are you?
How are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Excellent. For those following at home, we are at the, uh, 640. TCC office clerk candidate, so that's not the paramedic. Oh, boy, how do you pronounce your last name?
Borbals.
Good, I didn't mess it up. Okay, do we have questions? This is Mrs. Me and Greet, I see. Okay. So you have applied for this position?
Mm-hmm.
And we have three, right?
Yeah.
Three files. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I was just going to say, since we don't have the questions, if Mary just wanted, tell us a little bit about herself and why she wants the position.
Okay, well, um, my husband and I moved to Southwick about 27 years ago, uh, to buy our house and raise a family. We were from Connecticut, we found the taxes to be a little lower, so it's what intrigued us to come here.
Still?
We bought, yes, oh, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I have no complaints. Um, and, you know, originally, we had even thought maybe we would just buy to invest, sell, and then move back, but after we stayed here for a while, we really enjoyed the town, and we, we loved raising our kids here. Um, I, I worked, I mean, if you looked at my resume, I've, I've worked in several different places, in office administration is where my experience mostly lies. I stayed home to be a stable mom, and raised my kids for a few years, um, and now they're grown, and nothing's disturbing me. And now they're grown, and nothing's distracting me, except my husband sometimes, but. But I am looking to be full-time, it would be great to work in the town and serve the town that I've grown to really love and enjoy.
Thank you, Mary.
Sir?
I'm thinking of a number one through seven, what is it?
One through seven?
Yeah.
Seven?
Maybe.
That's Joe DeeDee.
You scared her.
D E E. He'll be here all week.
Yes.
Try the view.
Was that, or what do you bring to a potluck? That was one or the other.
What was your greatest failure?
I did, I brought it just in case, I didn't know.
Familiarized yourself with the content. Any questions based on any of that?
I do not, no, and I was told more than once that it is a union position.
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm that, the handbook seemed to suggest it was more for the non-union planes, but I also did.
Is there anything you wanted to add, anything further you needed to add to this? You've been at Springfield Rescue for almost six years?
Yes, I actually recently just sort of left there. I say sort of because I'm still there volunteering and helping, but I actually did take another job, and I just started like six to eight weeks ago. And it all was timing, I had gone on a trip, I'd gone overseas to Rome and Israel, came back, saw the posting in the paper, just before I was getting ready to start the new job and said, I'm going to apply, so I've applied. And I like where I'm at, but I'm in Bloomfield, Connecticut, so it would be nice to have a shorter commute, have better benefits, and be full-time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and sorry you had to wait longer than the actual interview took. Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
You're welcome.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you, too.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. This is going to be a very informal discussion. We usually, we're not going to ask you a bunch of questions, this time, somebody's done that already, right? A lot, and a test.
Yes.
Art contest, there was the whole thing, right? Go.
You feel like you've been at school, right?
You want to go for the number, or be consistent?
I got something else I'm thinking of.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Fox?
I'll do the same thing I did for Mary. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, Emily, and why you want the job, and if you're related to the Duns of Southwick?
I'm not related to the Duns of Southwick. My parents grew up in Northampton.
Oh, okay.
So, maybe distantly. So something about me career-wise, or.
Sure.
So I currently work for a credit union. I've been there a little over seven years. I like dealing with customers very much, you know, handling different situations and having them leave helped, and feeling good about what they, whatever they came in feeling bad about, at least make them feel good when they leave.
Well, that's good.
So, how do you handle, I mean, that's great where you work and it's beautiful, and people taking money out and bringing money in, and people smiling, you give them lollipops and dog biscuits for the dog. So here, that doesn't happen.
Yep.
Here, they're miserable, they gotta pay their taxes, they love girl. They're never happy, they're never happy at that window. And how do you feel about, how long will it take for that edge of that warm fuzzy feeling to kind of just go away?
Um, it hasn't at my current job.
Yes, but that's warm and fuzzy. Yeah, it's different, though, they're making like 0.5% on that money, you know? That's a good day for them, you know, here, we're asking for money all the time, and they're, and they're upset when I walk, you know?
Yep.
You get 25 people a day in, I'm going to say six have an attitude.
Yep.
Without a doubt.
Yep.
Good, good marker, good marker. So, you know, they, they can, quite honestly, they can beat you down pretty good here.
Yep.
You know, and you're in the public sector, and you got a smile, and there's one there I didn't know would even make it, but they did, I don't know how. Because I just didn't think, you know, they had the wherewithal to get punished every day by people, and you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm pretty used to it.
Got a little brother, older sisters?
I have a little brother.
Okay.
Kind of, you know, repetitive.
Yeah, no, but it's, just being honest, you know, it's.
We did, we had this discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
There's nothing.
I worked, prior to the credit union, I had worked at Stop &amp; Shop.
Oh, there you go.
And I worked behind the customer service desk, so that was a lot of, you know, people come in, they're screaming at you.
Yes.
Trying to receive a Western Union, they can't because they don't have an ID, that's a fun conversation. But yeah, no, it's something I'm pretty used to.
It's a tough job, even though it's, you know, there's nice pretty windows there, and you got a nice view.
Yep.
It's a tough job.
You gotta, you gotta build a little thicker skin.
A lot thicker.
Yep.
I'm done.
Jess was 6'2" when she started.
Yes.
Ed came from the DMV, right?
Yes, which was a huge help.
I got enough for the top that, I can't, I just can't.
Okay, pick a number one through seven.
Uh, five.
Okay, thank you. I'd ask more questions.
February, March, April, okay, just checking.
It's only going to get worse.
Yeah. Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't really have anything else to add, other than, you know, I, when I'm learning something new, I try to grasp all realms of it, and how it affects every aspect of the job, including the next job, that whoever's dealing with the task after me, try to make it as easy as possible.
So you know how to multitask?
Yes, oh, very much so, yep, juggle.
Even better.
And she can juggle. It's not on the resume, but move note that for future. So, one last comment, what did you think of the interview process?
I really liked it, I thought it was very well-done. I liked that, you know, we did the initial interview and then came back for the testing, I thought that was great.
Must have done well, you're, you're here.
Yeah.
So, that's good. Awesome. That's all we have for you.
Okay, perfect.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, very nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Have a good day.
You as well.
Thank you.
Evening.
Thank you.
Just going so, or I'm going to be caught up, if you should have had five people, I'd have been ahead of schedule. Monica.
Hi, that's Mrs. Martha James. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. This is going to be very informal. Sir?
I'm going to start off the same way as I did with the other.
Good idea.
Applicants. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like this job.
Um, I'm currently working at Westfield Bank. I, and I've been in the Southwick branch for a while, and I really enjoy the, the customers that come in, the residents of Southwick. I really like them, I enjoy handling money, it's sometimes a challenge with the numbers and stuff, but I really, I really like that aspect of it. And then personally, I just like to spend a lot of time with my family, hang out with my dogs, stuff like that.
Good.
Yeah.
And you're like flying west field that time, huh?
Yes.
Okay. So you know the area?
Yes.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. DeeDee?
Hey. So your time at the American End, tell me about that.
Um, I was working there as a waitress.
How'd that go?
Really good, I liked it, it was really rewarding, I've, I've always enjoyed working with the elderly community. I grew like very strong bonds with a lot of them. Yeah, I liked it a lot.
But how did you like working for Don?
Don was really funny, he was kind of hard, but he was a good boss, I liked him a lot.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, he really is.
So, of course, here, it's, you know, they're not, they're not as nice when they come through the door, just of their issues with taxes, or the dump sticker, or the people feel they shouldn't have to be charged for a dog license that they forgot to get updated.
Yep.
So they're miserable. How does that, how does that play out with you? You know what I mean, because I could be miserable.
Yeah.
Some people think I am when I come through that door. So does a smile go away? How tough is your skin, you know what I mean?
It's, it's pretty tough, we run into a lot of situations like that at the bank. A lot of people get charged, and they think it's not their fault, sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, but you just have to take everything with a grain of salt. Keep the smile, and empathy is a big thing, with customers, you have to understand where they're coming from, and you have to make sure they know that, and restate their, their concerns, and answer any questions you can.
So I'm at the window, I'm miserable, I'm not happy with what you want to tell me, what is your next option?
I would ask a supervisor to intervene if I didn't think that I was capable of handling it. I would do my best, but sometimes it's best to just bring somebody else in.
I'm thinking of a number one through seven, what is it?
Four.
Anybody got close tonight, or?
I haven't figured one out myself. Just, you know, you gotta break the ice a little bit, you know?
Okay.
So that was my theory, you know, and it's, it's a tough job, as, like I told you, the windows are beautiful, there's a beautiful view of the parking lot in another bank. But the people generally, six out of 25 are miserable when they walk through that door. And they're upset, they didn't like the bill they got, Mr. Fox might have upped some fees on them. And, and, you know, the clerks have this position where they do that sometimes, so people just get, they're agitated.
Yeah.
And you're the first firing, you know, they let it all go, whether it's sacks of pennies because they're really mad.
Yeah.
It happens.
Yeah, we get the same thing, we're like the front line, being tellers over there, so.
It's, it's a tough position, as cute as it sounds, and, you know, it's like, in this town, it's a stepping stone, really, that, that desk is where they, a lot of kids start and move up over the years, but it's a tough, tough spot, and if you, if you emotionally aren't there, you don't last.
Yeah.
But you're fine.
Yeah.
You're ready to go.
Yeah, I'm definitely up for the challenge.
You're at this, the Westfield Bank, right here?
Yeah, I started there part-time, and then I started floating as a full-timer, and then the senior teller had a baby, so I've been filling in for the senior teller since November. So I've been there pretty much almost a year, I floated for a couple months in the summer, and then ended up back there.
Full disclosure, I think I was lucky and saw her take it with both barrels from an angry customer at Westfield Bank. She did all right. What did you think of the interview process?
I liked it, I feel like I always leave interviews, and I'm like, oh, what just happened? You know, they're kind of overwhelming, but I really liked the second part, I wasn't expecting it to be more of like a test, so I went in there kind of prepared, I reflected on my answers, and I reflected on the things that they asked me, so I was prepared for that. And then when I got in there, wasn't what I prepared for, but I think I handled it really well, and I enjoyed getting a taste of what I would be doing on a day-to-day basis. I think the, the ladies were really clear on everything, they were very like informative on the job and everything that has to do with the union, and they gave me the packet, the handbook, and so I think I was like fully informed, so I enjoyed that, because you don't get that a lot on interviews.
Excellent.
Cindy, you took the test, too, didn't you?
I took it first. I did pass, by the way.
I was going to say, wait, you're not, wait, is there a 7:05, I didn't know about?
We just did it to make sure it came out smoothly.
And it did?
Yep.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't think so, not at this time, I can't think of anything.
Got to think of at least one. One question.
Okay, okay, one through 10, what number?
Seven.
That was very good.
You gotta be that quick around here.
Excellent, that's all we have for you this evening.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Just for the record, I always smile when I'm over there, because we have a great staff, and it's, I don't mind giving up my money.
Well, apparently, it's about the right percentage, right? One-third, right, is irate.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
So you can, can you continue on in that role?
I will never change.
Yeah. Will, Russ and I will smile and say hi, and you.
You do that, and I'll, and I'll come back with.
You pay in pennies.
Not a problem.
Until the board reorganizes in May, and then maybe we'll change roles, he'll be happy, I'll be angry. No, maybe?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I ask, Michelle, is there, in the process, is there, was there a pecking order of sorts, or? I, I don't know what the, how do they score, how's that, is that the best way of saying that? Is there three copies? Or is there just? I'm just hiring, I'm like, you gave me nothing.
Well, they're trying to save money.
I guess so.
So, we did, we did a testing, we revamped it from the last time we did a testing, and it was really more in detail. Again, Cindy took it for the first time, and she did, you know, fairly well. So in the ranking of the testing, it actually went the last one, that was here, then the first one, and then, no, I'm sorry, the last one, the second one, and the first, so basically backward order, as far as how they took the test. She had it all right, with attention to detail to everything. These other two did a lot right, but there was a lot of attention to detail that was overlooked, so that's how the ranking was, based on that. They all did well in the interview, Carl was in with the interviews, but my recommendation is.
We narrowed it, and we narrowed it down to three, you know?
How many did you interview?
Eight?
Eight to 11. Eight to 11 via 39 application.
Yep, two different.
Do you feel the pool was better or worse in your past?
Less, given.
Well, less people, of course, but do you think the talent was higher, lower? Overall, not in any.
Overall, I would say yes, it definitely was a stronger.
Stronger patch.
Yes, and especially given the fact that we really tightened the test to be a little more detailed-oriented, and more computer-based. That really showed us, and we got three good ones out of that, I thought that was pretty good, so.
You want to carry this then, you want to take care of this now, while Michelle, and everyone's here?
You know, this has been, so this is for a position that has been open for quite a while.
Correct.
Okay, it's not a new employee, structure-wise, this is desk to the left.
Backfilling.
Oh, I was saying. Depending, I'm sitting in the office looking out, desk to the left. Okay. I'm ready to make a decision, if you guys are.
I'd just soon take it up later.
Okay.
We shall.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next item is appoint Assistant TCC per Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 19, 39A, and, most importantly, 39C. We have a letter here from Michelle Hill. January 22nd, the Select Board authorized the reclassification of one union position to move into an assistant. Treasurer-collector-clerk position, leaving one union clerical position. As a treasurer-collector-clerk and department head to the position, I present to the Board the desire to use upper mobility to ask Danielle Zaring be appointed to the new Assistant TCC position. For the last two years, Danielle has proven her ability to drive, and drive to learn all the skills in the office to be successful. She is energetic, polite with customers, displays attention to detail, and extremely motivated to learn more. With the challenges the offices face, Danielle rose in above the expectation of a clerical position, and always available to help when needed. With the reclassification, was the need to streamline experienced employees in the position for the TCC, resulting in longevity for the office. With the reclassification was the need to streamline experience employees in the position for the TCC resulting in longevity for the office. And there's a section of Mass General Law, Section nineteen here, regarding the Town Clerk may, in writing, appoint an assistant clerk, et cetera, et cetera. And thirty-nine C.
I don't have the cover letter.
What's that?
I didn't have the cover letter, I just.
Was fire chief made our whole packet, can I?
Here you go.
In the drawer?
Can you spell it?
No.
I take it back, this wasn't in the drawer. It wasn't attached to this.
Right, right.
I pop.
It's my duckers, a motion word at the way it needs to be.
I do. I do.
Right there. Proposted.
Ah. The thing that I took off with the paper.
Did it flip?
So I need a motion to vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section nineteen, thirty-nine A and thirty-nine C to approve TCC appointment of Diane Zare as Assistant TCC.
I'll make that motion, but can I just clarify something?
Absolutely.
So what this does, Michelle, is takes, in theory, you would have still an open clerk's position if this goes through.
No.
No.
Which reclassifies one of the two union positions, takes it out of the union pursuant to the contract.
Right.
It leaves it unauthorized.
Right, so you technically still had two union positions, we're not going to.
One's going.
Oh, it is going away completely.
Going away.
Okay, and we'll revisit whether that's part-time down the road, I'm just trying to clarify.
That's in the budget process.
Right. Right, okay.
You're starting out with four FTE and you're ending with four FTE with this.
Yes, and I was just trying to clean that up, so everyone in the audience understood.
Nothing has changed with full-time.
Right, exactly. Okay, let's keep that up, but go ahead.
All right, and I, I just want a clarification because, you know, when we voted on this last week, it was brought to my attention that we had discussed at previous meetings that we would address this issue in the budget process. So we have a good working relationship with the Finance Committee, so I reached out to some of those people because there was some concern, because I guess the liaison went back with a positive recommendation, but wasn't at the meeting for the discussion, so.
Okay.
So I, I talked to several members of the Finance Committee, explained what exactly was taking place and the reasoning behind that, and there was money in the budget and it's, it's basically a personnel decision. Uh, and I think just to emphasize, some of the things we hope to achieve by doing this is addressing the needs of special elections because that's something that's going to continue to grow. We had talked about the possibility of maybe some nighttime hours. We talked about the ability of people to be able to sign and specialize in certain areas like elections and et cetera, et cetera, so.
Right, sign-offs, sign-offs and certifications.
Right, right.
Very important.
Because things have become more complex, particularly the elections and, and as Michelle's working on tax titles to make sure that.
But you know, you really, you really haven't looked at the structure of the office and its ability to respond to the future and be positioned for current day needs for over thirty years, so this is actually a step in the right direction.
Right. But I, I just didn't want anyone to think that we kind of went back on what we said, that, you know, I, I think we had an opportunity and we took the opportunity to address, address the concern. And we will, as Michelle said, we'll be going over other things with the Finance Committee during the budget process, so. And I think we can address any, any concerns that might arise at that time. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Perfect.
Well said, sir. So we have a motion on the floor and a second.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Do we need to sign anything here?
No, I'll, I can, I'll do all the sign-ups based on your vote.
Okay. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Mo and I will continue to smile when we see you.
Until the board reorganizes in May and then we may change roles.
Well, we will be changing roles.
Okay.
I don't care about the smiling part, you can keep that.
No, I get that. Okay.
Doug, we might want to mention to the treasurer, we did acknowledge the receipt of the fiscal year nineteen insurance rates because that was an earlier item.
We did that?
Yep.
Okay, review Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Joint Transportation C Project List. So it looks like they're starting their nineteen to twenty-three tip.
And yes, the DPDW Director, Dick is going to be writing heard over a lot of this, Randy?
What's that?
Pioneer Valley and their.
The tip.
Well, we've got, uh.
Two projects.
One potential project, they've talked about several years, which is the beginning of the road, phase two.
Okay.
That's the only one side of the city in here.
Okay. Some will continue to work with our sister community of Westfield on that bridge.
Yeah, no, all, all the area community, the board endorsed the appointment of Brian Sullivan as our area representative.
Okay.
On the JTC.
Uh, the next, then, our next item is, it says ratify, but I actually held this. This was brought to my attention last week and I didn't sign it because I wanted to add some color to it um, and presented to the board for their consideration, um, only because there was some um, prescience on this, I think, if that's the right word. So I got a call from the Conservation Coordinator last week asking me to send them a letter of recommendation regarding a New England Trail Accessibility Improvement Program grant that they're applying to, um, applying for, um, from the Appalachian Mountain Club's grant applications, I think it's the National Park Service, but anyway, um, this is regarding the bridge that was put in behind Rising Corner. Uh, the parking for that area is near Rising Corner and the, it's a supposedly floating bridge that was constructed over a bog and um, there was commentary back at the time that the expense of said bridge was, um, expensive when it came in front of the Community Preservation Committee, but the Community Preservation Committee did pass the project forward, it did get voted on at town meeting and passed at town meeting. Um, but there was commentary, um, as to why the bridge itself had to be handicapped accessible when it was quite a distance out into the woods over a bog, um, which drove the cost of said bridge, um, much higher. And there was commentary as to, um, future requirements or future endeavors to, to make either the parking area accessway to said bridge would need to be accessible and/or the entire Appalachian Trail, um, to be accessible from the other side of the bridge. And lo and behold, this is a grant request, um, to make the accessway from the parking area, I believe, to the bridge, um, accessible. So hence why I didn't want to just sign this and then have to come back to you gentlemen for ratification and get skewered in the public, so I'll open this for discussion.
I'm at a loss for words, so they want to, they want to make it ADA compliant parking lot slash spot up to the bridge? So they can get to it?
It says, I offer strong National Park Service support, I don't have the entire grant application. Um, and actually, it's not to the, it was to, uh, who's the grant, granting agency is in the state?
Yeah, it was another nonprofit, right? I think it was.
The Appalachian Trail folks, but it was to, is it DOR? Not DOR, D O.
D C R?
D C R, D C R, sorry. I misspelled, D C R.
Yep.
Proposal to transform a segment of the New England scenic trail at Rising Corner Trailhead into an accessible trail.
Right, and since you had got this, they had extended the, the grant application, I think, to be submitted on the fifteenth or something. So there's time, there's a.
Right.
You know, you're not up to speed on this, where you feel like you're, um, can make a decision, you can have Dennis or some other parties come in.
I don't have a problem signing it, I just want to know how it's going to haunt us later.
Right.
So they don't get the grant, are we?
Well.
I, I, I just.
Look.
Yes, sir.
You know, we built this bridge to nowhere.
Yes.
That we've had citizens tell us it's not functioning properly. And one of the selling points at the town meeting was liability. We had a local attorney stand up and say, liability, 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 okay? And it passed and we built this thing, but according to some people, it's not functioning properly. It gets hung up, so it, to me, it's not handicapped accessible. And now we're going to extend further the liability issue of making it handicapped accessible to a bridge we don't know if it's functioning properly. And we got, I, I think, an even bigger liability issue. And I, I, you know, God bless them, but this is a trail, a hiking trail and I, I mean.
With you, I just, that's why.
I think, I think we're opening up the Pandora's Box, I, I, and I, I don't think, uh, in hindsight, it was probably the best move to put in that bridge, you know? Uh, for thousands of years, nobody had a bridge there, you know, and traversed it. And then we put it in, so I, I certainly don't think, based on the information we have and, and the liability issue, I, I would not be in favor of giving our support to it.
I just don't know where it leads us, that's why I said, you know, we sign it, what are we, what are we committing to one way or the other in the end? When if it doesn't go through?
We can either have, I, I'm with Russ, I mean, I, I remember at the town meeting, you know, there was several people. More than welcome to, you know, we, we had this discussion at the town meeting about the bridge and somebody was very.
Maybe those questions can be answered.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So entertain a motion to table this till future meeting.
Cindy will bring them in as an agenda.
Do you want to second the motion to table?
I'll, I'll second that motion to table, I was, look, I see we have an attorney here and was going to ask him a general question. You know, this is our property that we purchased, correct? Conservation property. And if.
Three hundred grand of CPA money.
So if we create this handicapped accessible pathway, who, we don't know who's going to maintain that, to a bridge that's supposed to be handicapped accessible, but it doesn't float properly, it gets hung up and someone was to get injured, would you say that there might be the possibility that someone might pursue legal action against the town itself?
Oh, geez, there's a lot of assumptions there.
And welcome to the Select Board.
And I want just a yes or no.
It depends, um, it, could someone file a claim? I'm sure they could.
Of course.
Um, would, would the town be liable for it? There's certain immunities that the town has for, against suit for, for certain things. I, I would want the opportunity, of course, to examine the issue in more detail.
Okay.
But I, I think it, it definitely gives rise to some novel issues of an accessible bridge that's not really accessible and trying to make it more accessible when it's not really accessible now may, as Selectman D V said, open Pandora's box.
Why, so now we get to the bridge and if the bridge isn't accessible, we're stuck there and whatever, if they do get over the bridge, are we continuing on?
So those are things that we need to, we need to examine more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Review fis, are we on, we have a seven oh five executive session, do we want to do that and come back?
No, just keep going.
You sure?
Yeah, because you.
Review fiscal year nineteen Veteran District Budget.
Yep, that's just in there, I just wanted you to know, I'll be, um, meeting with the, um, the other members of the Veterans District on February thirteenth and sort of, and we will be, uh, reviewing and adopting a district budget veterans thing and that will be incorporated into our tax recount. Any questions on it? And as you know, um, that acts as our Veterans Department, we are part of a district. So that meeting will include the new mayor of Agawam, who we all met at the conference.
We had lunch?
He was busy.
Are you, were you at that lunch?
Yeah, but he was quick, right? And he was, he was.
We tried to staple him down. He didn't have the staples. Uh, Westfield News, yeah, Papercooks didn't work. Westfield News, Business and Industry Journal, two thousand eighteen publication is in the end of March, deadline Friday, February ninth. Did we do this last year, sir?
Yes, we did.
What size?
Um, what do you think, did we do a half-page? I think it was a half-page.
Yeah.
From your gift account.
I'll make that motion.
Tell him I want ten percent off and I'll second it.
He nodded his head, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Half-page?
Half-page.
Half-page.
Ten percent off that was.
Ten percent off that price, I wrote it on the paper, all good.
Does he, does he still do a radio show? Because Joe's been having us come to Joe's radio show, so I haven't been to his radio show.
He hasn't liked inviting you guys anymore, I don't know why.
I got invited, he didn't show up for his radio show that they had a sub.
Oh, twenty percent off.
He didn't show up to his own radio show?
Oh, I had a substitute, substitute. Okay.
Oh, you mean you had drag, okay, and you were talking sports probably.
We had a grand time. Pavement Management Plan Update.
Yep, uh, the board and I had gone to the trade show and we were looking at, uh, different booths and we happened to come across our friends from Beta and they have been working with Randy on a potential timeframe for an update and your estimate is, um, fourteen eight. And of course, it is a Chapter ninety eligible item.
And he told us that he recommends doing this every five to six years or four to five years?
I think Randy, what is this, four years old now?
Uh, it's three, this is the third year.
So. And I know with the road projects.
Twenty-fourteen is what it's done.
Yeah, Randy had, Randy had given you a, an overview of his budget and some of the infrastructure projects, so you were wondering about whether or not things needed to be updated in concert with that? So this is your time to make a decision on that.
Well, when we get into budget discussions, Randy, do you want to give a thumbs up or thumbs down? Or is this something we need to do this year or next year?
Uh, yeah, the way, like, I, you know, I talked to Beta over the fall, last fall, and they said, you know, you're about time for an update and I'm like, well, let me, you know, I don't have the budget right now, but I'm going to get back into springtime.
Yeah.
And see how the budgets lay out this, this, this year. Is this fine, but the immediate time they gave me that proposal, which I passed along to Carl, so. Yeah, we are, we are due for an update within, I'd say, within the next year. We can do it now, we can do it in six months or a year, I don't, I mean, I can't tell you what the new plan is going to tell us in terms of the priority projects, probably won't change all that much.
Right.
And you know, what, what the, what, you know, you've got to remember the, when we do an update, it's a snapshot of what the road's condition is at that day, right? So every road deteriorates at different rates, around their own different schedules. But the plan makes some assumptions, but you know, you can't say for certain how, wow, that road's going to deteriorate in that, every year. So what this will do is give us an update of where that, that road is today. I mean, the real emphasis is that, you know, we still need the money. You know, it's, it's nice to put a plan out there, but you need the money to back it up. And we haven't quite seen that yet, you know, so I, I'd rather, because if you want to put the money out there, I'll find a project with your blessing. But we need the money to back it up, that's, that's important.
Kind of sounds like we're putting this off for a year.
Yeah, because, you know, nothing, I mean, what is.
I'm giving you my recommendations, you know, from the last plan, as, as, as it is today, and I have no problem running with those projects.
Right.
You know, we talked about that a few weeks ago, so.
Funding, funding, funding.
Just calling those things at the trade show, we just talking everywhere.
Yeah. Oh, it's good.
Yeah, we asked him to give us a price because he said do it every four to five years, but if it's only four years old, wait, wait another year.
Yeah, it's not like we got four hundred grand burning a hole in our pocket and jeez, jeez, what, pick a road, pick a road. jeez, pick a road, pick a road, it's not the case.
If you give me fifteen grand, I'm going to put, I'd rather put it towards a road work than as opposed to a plant today.
There you go.
That's my biggest need, is putting it and paving it.
There we go.
That took care of that.
Thank you, Randy.
Another one of these waters. We never had one of these in three years, now we got just three in three weeks.
Yeah, but what's different about this one is the water commission is did in the pavement.
Yes.
For this water flow, so this is the, just the corresponding sewer part of it. So this one's more clear cut.
It is clear cut, but, and I...
And as a general rule, whenever the, you know, whenever the board gets something from the water commissions, then they've done a sign up, then the board does one too.
Funny, they don't do it when we do it that way, but that's okay.
So they approved a twenty-seven dollar abatement?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yeah, because their rate is different than your rate.
Right.
Their rate?
Of the fee.
Yeah, their rate. The water rate is a different rate from the gallonage than the sewer rate.
I get it.
A few dollars is time to pay your rationale. So it was a leak at this property, a water leak, and I think in the toilet.
Yeah.
They fixed it, and then, so what the water commissioner's typical policy is, is if they can justify that they fixed the leak, and justify how much water was actually leaking through, they'll abate ten percent of that, that leak. And that's their general policy, that they've been running with, you know, for most projects, for most issues that come up with this.
And generally, we've matched it on the sewer side.
I believe so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion for the ten percent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And was it caught because of the new meters?
Yeah.
And I'll update you really quick on the one that's still out there, I have contacted the people, and I'm waiting to hear back.
Thank you, sir. This is a letter from Police Chief David A. Riccardi. This morning, I had the extreme pleasure of receiving a one hundred dollar donation from Todd and Terry Brown of One Ten Fred Jackson Road. The donation was made out to the Southwick Police Department with enclosed notes stating, "Please use the funds where they are needed." Since the donors made no specific request, requesting this check be deposited in our community police and gift account. I need a motion to accept this generous donation from Todd and Terry Brown.
I'll make that motion for Professor Brown.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He's teaching now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Stormwater funding webinar by CBI and EPA. Informational webinar, February one, that's in two days, at noon. Hosted by the Consensus Building Institute and EPA New England. Please join us for a forty-five minute informational webinar, Thursday, February first, at noon. An overview of the training services, training series, answer questions, provide registration instructions, and hear from a number of Massachusetts municipal officials, participating in a roundtable series last year. Can anybody...
I can listen to it, this gives me credit with Charlie.
It's going to get you credit with Randy.
Oh, with Randy, all right, I'll listen.
Is it possible to tape it, or?
Just read it closely, this webinar on the first is just a quick overview of what they want to give at a future presentation.
That's fine, we're sort of easy ones to listen.
So this is just more of an nuts and bolts, dates times, where they're thinking of the actual seminar, I mean, it's going to get later dated.
There was a stormwater seminar at the MMA, I was off at the other ones for the Myacres. Did any...
That's for you to keep seeing.
Okay, here, sir.
Joe's assigned to that, are you going to attend that as well?
You know, sometimes they have webinars, and you can go pull them back up.
Oh, like afterwards?
Afterwards.
Yeah.
I'll find out for you, Russ, I'll take notes.
You got it.
Don't worry about a thing.
Joe's going to take notes.
I got this covered.
I already talked to the guy from the federal two years ago, he told me.
Yeah, they didn't have a boot there this year.
Yeah, just sweep the streets.
No boot.
Well, Russ talked him out of ever having a boot there again.
I think they got hung up last year, you know?
This is from Arthur Lawler, building inspector. "We are planning to go live with e-permitting on February twentieth." Yay. "In speaking with the building departments of other towns, become clear that not everyone will want to, want to, or be able to use the system. To that end, there is usually a charge for staff to take a paper application over the counter and enter in the system. I am therefore sending this request for your approval to add twenty dollars to the permit fee for each permit application which is taken over the counter and put into the electronic permitting system by staff. Thank you for your consideration."
Can we, you know, you know how I hate fees.
Oh, yeah.
And is it possible that we have a gradual, you know, maybe some minor cost, and then build it up gradually over the next couple of years, so that people might get used to it and have an incentive to learn how to do it properly?
Okay, so you're thinking about a graduated fee?
Right.
Okay, and what would be year one or the current one?
Five dollars.
And do the other board members concur about that?
So now it doesn't cost anything to go, well, it does cost, because the applicant's a...
You've got to pay the fee.
Got to pay the fee no matter what.
You give them a paper application, now it's going to be electronic application, someone has to type it.
It becomes a data input.
Well, I got that, right, absolutely.
So he's trying to say, how much data input would it be?
Yeah, I guess five bucks this year, and then we're going to go up to twenty.
Motion's made in second.
So that's fiscal year, or for one year, right?
For one year, and then we'll go to fifteen, and then the third year we'll go to twenty.
Fifteen, the second.
If I could just add something, maybe the better way to, to address it, rather than an increased fee for the paper application, is a discounted fee for the online?
It's not a bad idea, Council.
Yeah, that's probably the better way to do it.
That's how the Secretary of State does it, for corporate filings.
And there's a reason for that.
Right.
So, the entire fee is increased by five dollars for everyone. To file online, it's five dollars less.
There you go. I like that.
So...
That's a better number.
Add five on to the e-permitting fee.
Right.
And then a five...
The total fee is increased by five dollars. If you file online...
A five dollar discount. And next year, we could go to like a ten dollar discount, and then a twenty dollar discount.
No, well, you'd have to increase the fee, right?
Right, right.
So the motion is... The only thing that scares me now is the guy just going to say, "It ain't worth five bucks, here you go." You, you know, but you still got to fill it out, I guess, right, so...
Well, it's just like your corporate tax, or corporate filings with the Secretary of State. You can do it online, save twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Or you can mail it in, give them twenty-five dollars more, you know?
Yeah, you're right.
Guess what? You learn how to use that computer very quickly.
Not for five bucks.
So whatever the current fee is, you go up by five dollars, and then you discount it by five dollars if they...
Right.
File online.
And then...
If that doesn't work, go to the town.
Yeah, I mean, the hope is that they just, it's easier to do it online for ninety percent of those contractors anyways.
Right, Art's been working with people and educating him, he does a great job. I'm sure that most people are going to do it, but you're still going to have some resistance.
Well, you have the, you know, what class was that? So you have the class of whatever year that was.
You could have left out.
It is hard, you know, they, they don't want to play with the computers, you're right, they don't want to...
He's got a smartphone now.
Ask him how to, show him how to use it, though.
He's got a phone, sits in his pocket.
Didn't some of the Beatles graduate that year?
I wouldn't know, I was in diapers.
The WIC...
You saw a Beatles show the other day.
That's correct.
The WIC, three-three-eight approval of February race. This is from...
Yeah, it's a one-time, I mean, obviously, they haven't given you their full year, so it just had to come before you for an approval.
And it was discussed last year at this time, because he had to come rushing in for that February race, and...
So, and also, just for everyone's edification, the National has been moved forward one week to June thirtieth, which we knew about, but, so now everyone knows it's June thirtieth. But he needs approval for the February eighteenth event?
J Day.
J Day. Any objections?
No.
Do we need to vote on that, or is this an acknowledgement?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? One abstention.
I might be doing food there, so...
Reserve fund transfer legal ads. Original budget was seven thousand two hundred and ninety, they've expended five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Another nineteen oh seven ninety-two is encumbered, and the balance in the account is one hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. So they are looking for three thousand dollars for legal ads, job openings, hearings, and newspaper, rising costs, where'd the newspaper guy go? Rising costs to place ads for job openings and hearings. Need a motion to send this to the finance committee.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's that from?
Legal, the legal department.
Legal, oh, the legal department, I should have known.
No, it's not Ben's department.
That wasn't enough for that legal department.
No, no, we need the double blue sheet for that one.
Lot of hearings, planning, but lot of hearings, lot of land use boards holding hearings.
Which people do pay for, but it goes back into general fund, correct?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Old business, first is, there's no update on the covered bridge since our last meeting?
Oh, Ben's right here.
I was hoping.
Are you glad? He never got back?
He didn't, I spoke with the chief tonight. I don't think he's going to give us his opinion as to what vehicles can or can't go over the bridge. He gave us his report with the tonnage and the weights and the dimensions. I am guessing from the silence that if he opines, he being the engineer, opines as to exactly what vehicles can and can't go over.
Yeah, never will.
Somebody's going to hold him liable, and he doesn't want to make that opinion. And the chief and I discussed that, he agreed. He knows that he only has two vehicles that can go across. He's going to craft a letter to send to me, so that we can inform the neighbor, the owners and properties.
The foreholders.
Saying there are only two vehicles that can go over the bridge, here are the two, we recommend that the remedial action take place in order to increase the tonnage capacity that can go over, in order for all emergency vehicles to go over.
Very well.
Okay.
There is an update on the North Pond PWC bylaw. So we received a letter back from Chief Riccardi, kind of clarifying that if you didn't hear back from the powers that be at the state, then you're free to go about whatever it is you wish to do. So being that we didn't hear back from, from about, say, six months...
That's about right.
It's about right. Chief sent a copy of our proposed bylaw to us for inclusion on a town meeting warrant. That being said, we, I had, and we had committed to a public informational session on same, prior to...
I wasn't sure whether or not we wanted to then take this draft bylaw and send it to the Assistant Attorney General who approves bylaws, so that we could get an advance reading of their acceptance on it?
I don't know if she'll provide her feedback or not.
Right, but at least that will have been another step that we did.
We're going to run out of...
Because that is the agency.
But we will run out of runway, so we should do that in parallel.
You can plan on putting it on the warrant, but...
And still have your informational session, here we are in February.
You've got to have information.
So, what I'm thinking is, though, toward the end of February, we should schedule that meeting for not, maybe not a select board night, or as part of the select board meeting agenda.
Well, I think the harbor master should hold the informational meeting separately.
That would be great as well, but we should do that, because we had committed to doing that.
So if the harbor master holds that, we should be there anyways, no?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And then hold another one as selectmen?
No, I think it's...
It would be a joint meeting, good point.
Yeah, make that a joint meeting.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. One and done.
Well, he may end up, his schedule may end up necessitating he go into early March, so just a...
Yep, that's fine. But that gives you April to get it all put together for the May town meeting.
Well, I think Ben pretty much has the core that I read, I mean, he's got, you know, right? There isn't, it might be a word or two, but you pretty much have an abstention.
Yeah, I know, but we've got to get it...
Absolutely.
Maybe the cornrows over.
Right, that we both got.
We already did the sewer abatement, correct?
Joe talked about that.
Yep.
And then Lee already talked about the, let's see, the two hundred fiftieth anniversary.
And the social media policy?
Russell?
This was something coming out of MMA?
Yep, it was, we have, it's in your folder. Copies that one of our board members and other people had attended the conference to, and people's spouses and everybody else went to, but...
No need to reinvent the wheel.
No.
A policy that we can review and work with to, similar to what we've done with other...
Well, we can double check what we have. Obviously, we have, we have to have the Labor Council review the version that was for employees only, and then there was another one for people on town boards.
Right.
Correct.
And then probably have some sort of get together, especially with the appointed and elected officials, to explain it.
So what do we need to do to move that forward?
Well, Labor's already doing its, they're going to review that one as part of that, so this other one, I think, we all have to read it, we haven't all read it yet, so we need to just keep it under old business.
Okay.
And very quickly, back to the two hundred fiftieth anniversary, since Lee has spent the night with us, I spoke with Senator Humison, and he said that if our chief administrative officer will send him an email to remind him that he will file the appropriate, not legislation, but appropriate appropriation.
Earmark, request for an earmark appropriation for the state budget.
Right, similar to what he did for Sister City of Westfield, for funds for our two hundred fiftieth anniversary. And then, again, for Lee's benefit, and since he wasn't here, we're going to be sending out something to all boards, commissions, and nonprofits in town, and letting them know that we're forming a committee, and we hope to have a very well-rounded committee. We've got clarification from the town clerk that there is no limit on the number...
Right, last week, we had asked for that to be researched, so that was done.
So we can begin the process of forming a committee.
Right, Cindy's wording up.
Other old business?
I think this is under old business, Mr. Chairman, is we have not scheduled our walkthrough of the buildings the town of Southwick owned that we lease out to the regional school system.
Wasn't it the February vacation is when you usually...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's coming right up.
Yeah, all right, we'll send them an email.
And the last update I have under old business was we, the Marijuana Zoning Subcommittee met last week, and is meeting again tomorrow to finalize the draft medicinal, industrial, um, medicinal, industrial, recreational and agricultural zoning bylaw that's going to be sent back to the planning board. And they're ready to pretty much, uh, wash their hands of it and send it back to the planning board and let them begin the hearing process. Given the ballot initiative that is going to be on the warrant, um, there's still the need for the bylaw. There may be iterations of the bylaw, uh, depending on the outcome of the, uh, ballot initiative. So that's where they are and they're meeting again tomorrow to review the changes that they made last week.
Now, in addition to that, was there a discussion from members of the committee about a local option, um, tax or?
That would be new business.
Okay.
I would think. Anyway, uh, new business? Or was there any other old business? Sorry?
Just to follow up on that, I had a conversation with Attorney Foil concerning a ballot question and, uh, a, uh, that will refer back to a warrant article that he will be drafting.
So, council ends up producing both the ballot question for placement on the election ballot, which is going to be Tuesday, May 8th, and then a town meeting article, which is Tuesday, May 15th.
Correct.
And then we have, I guess, another issue that would relate to that.
Correct. Okay.
Something that Marcus, uh, old business. Uh, last week, uh, myself and members of the maintenance staff, the head librarian and, uh, Mr. McMahon had a walkthrough with the library on the carpeting painting project. There's a few other things that have to be addressed that came up as part of the details in terms of the, uh, the length, uh, you know, the building's gonna end up being closed more than the desired three days, so there's gonna be some of those concerns. And then, you know, types of carpeting, whether it's rolled or tiled carpeting, so there's gonna be some of these other issues that, uh, Bob is gonna have to go back and revisit. So we're getting, we've issued an addenda for a future walkthrough and we'll postpone the bid opening tomorrow. Okay?
New business?
Nothing.
This was part of the, uh, Marijuana Subcommittee. It's come up a couple of times. Um, as part of the state law, there is the option for a town to adopt a local option tax on the sale of recreational marijuana. Um, and there is a sample warrant article that, uh, was sent to us by the chair of that subcommittee, Marcus Phelps, to see if the town would vote to accept provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 64 N, as recently amended by et cetera, et cetera, to authorize a town to impose a local sales tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating with the town to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at the rate of 3% of the total sales price received by the marijuana retailer. So this would be on top of sales tax and so on and so forth. Basically the local option. So, um, pretty sure it's up to this board if we want to put this forth to a warrant article. Obviously, it's highly dependent on how the ballot question goes and, and the zoning and so on and so forth, but, um, it's an option that's available to towns under the state law. So, you want to think about that for, or you want to put it forward or?
I'd just, I'd put it forward.
Well, we're gonna own it. You may as well get 3%.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
So if you could just sign that off, that.
I heard a motion in a second then?
We can hand it over to council and then he'll have to draft ours.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cause he's already got quite a warrant that he's developed.
Yeah, it's getting.
He's even got the list. Look. We go over that list today. And actually, I will tell you, uh, the council and I met with Randy and we're, we're working on the updates to the sewer use regulations cause they haven't been updated since the start of the sewer. Those are being modernized too.
Great. Any other new business? We're going to executive session then? Yes, yes. We have new rules tonight for executive session, apparently. Right? This is the new rules?
Yeah. Kinda choppy. I don't know what's changed from what's not. I just gave you the three.
There was a handoff from this Mass. City Solicitor.
Yeah, I just gave you the three that. The three that pertain to.
You want to have Ben look at it?
Although, I wanna, I wanna hear it. Let me get this first flushed. Let's see if it's, do that with me.
Okay, folks, we're going into executive session under exemption two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Uh, the suggested motion is to move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and the chair declare that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the open body and not reconvene an open session. And exception seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirement.